I know, I had it stopped. Now try.
Now see what it does. You shouldn't have it now. Lovely. No, you do it.
Like call to order this special meeting in the county council and all of this for June twenty twenty five. This is a little call.
Society House Sir Mayor Dean Vanderheide.
Here.
Councilmember John Trader.
Here.
Councilmember Chad Leacon.
Present.
Councilmember Ben Tommy.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Lorai.
Present.
Councilmember Kevin Manley.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Eckerly.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Moonkey.
Present.
City Attorney Renee Faber.
Here.
Clark Treasurer Kirtzun Kenees, present. In order to have a forum, a majority of the council council members must be in attendance. All of the members are in attendance, which is a majority. Therefore, there is a forum for this meeting.
Thank you, Pearson. Well, take a little moment for personal reflection. Thank you. Put all of the ready. Please stand and join. You have a great turnout this evening. As you know, this special meeting, the information council to absorb. Got the midstates quarter project done, which will receive from both Lockmueller and with that. We have the public input, just those uh. Support of midstates and public input, opposition states. There's some rules that I think the earson has said, explained to everyone as we win. You want to cover the timeframes.
Sure, I'll just go over a couple of housekeeping items too. And there are two exits up here, right here and in the back, in case of an emergency. The bathrooms are down this hallway on your left, if you need them. I think Chad downstairs will point out where the restrooms and the bathrooms are. The midstates quarter project update will receive, will be given by the Lockmueller group and NDOT, and they will have about thirty minutes to talk. After that, we will do public input from both the. It's supportive of the midstates corridor and in opposition to the midstates corridor. Both of those parties will also be given a maximum of thirty minutes to speak. Speakers are first come, first served, so when the time is up, the time is up. After each party gives their thirty minutes speeches, ten minutes will be given to the council to ask questions. And unlimited, a number of people may speak, like I said before, but you will only get thirty minutes. There will be no action taken at this meeting. And I think that's about all I have.
Here's some. I I hope that we get confirmation they can hear what's going to. The overflow crowd is, I think we've. Yeah, a hundred seats down there. I think we've got all about fifteen filled, is what I understand. So very good crowd.
Um, Chad says if everyone stays quiet, they can hear the speaker.
Well, we'll have to do that. We have a lot of background side conversations. It's going to end well.
And I do intend to set a thirty minute timer and my hope, if I catch it, is to give you about a five minute mark.
Okay, so we want to start out with. Lockmueller. Starting out to. Diana.
There's an important task to be done.
Oh, yes. And if you could silence your phones, please, I would appreciate it.
I can, yeah, if you push the light there and then I'll give you your mouse so you can do what you need to do. Okay. Then I'll take it back when you're done.
You're the one.
If you need to be in front of a computer, that might still work on the table.
Okay, I'm just trying to get it in presentation mode. Hey, okay. I'm Kiana Wheeler. I'm the NDOT project manager that has been overseeing this project, both in tier one and now that we're into tier two. Um, so thank you for asking us to be here to give you a project update tonight. Can you hear me okay?
Now you're good.
Can, is that better? Okay.
Go ahead and start.
I sure will. Yep, so I'm Kiana Wheeler. I'm the NDOT project manager. I oversaw the tier one and I'm now overseeing the tier two. Thank you for asking us to be here tonight to give a project update and tell you where we've been and where we're going with this project. Jason Dupont with Lockmueller Group will also be speaking tonight. He's the project manager with Lockmueller Group. David Goffinette is here, but he's in the overflow room. He is our public outreach lead. Um, I also have Betsy Whitmore here with me tonight. She's not on the presentation, but she is our public relations director for major projects. And then Erica Tate is our federal highway representative overseeing the project. So brief overview of the project. Tier one study approved a two thousand foot wide corridor that runs east of Huntingburg and Jasper. Um, in tier one, we studied many alignments, many alternatives, and a build decision was made. So we also looked at a no build in tier one. Um, but it was screened out and there was a need shown for the project, which was approved by the Federal Highway Administration with a record of decision in twenty twenty three. So some of the reasons that. A bill decision was made and the approved corridor was selected were due to travel time savings to key destinations. Travel time savings to intermodal centers. Um, truck hours saved and um lower potential relocations. With the corridor that we selected. So I say lower potential relocations because. Upgrading existing two thirty one would have had a substantially larger number of relocations to property owners and businesses. So. That's actually said here in the next bullet. It had the most favorable alternative for time savings and or sorry, improving. U S two thirty one was not selected because of those high number of relocations. It had the most unfavorable time savings, but only five minutes compared to twenty five to forty three. And I want to clarify, that's not just around Jasper, right? That's not just getting you from the start of the. S I U two to the end of S I U two, that is to those key multimodal locations. Um, and it also had the worst performance on truck hour sake. So the tier two study will identify the type of highway used, so we will determine whether this project will be a super two facility or an expressway. So a super two will be two lanes with those widened shoulders. And an expressway is a four lane divided highway facility type. Um, along with that, access and alignment decisions. Um, along with the right of way footprint will be completed and determined as part of this tier two NEPA study. So again, some of the decisions that were made in tier one, we will not be evaluating further in tier two. They were made in tier one. And that includes upgrading U S two thirty one. It was eliminated in tier one. And it it originally was screened out pretty early on because of the poor performance. However, because of. The large amount of public feedback that we got, that they that the the local stakeholders wanted to see two thirty one upgraded. We brought it back into the study and did a further analysis of it. Um, but it was still screened out because of those poor performing criteria that we just talked about. Um. And then the seventy five million for operational improvements designed to complement the project benefits of the study. So. In tier one, Governor Holcomb had announced seventy five million dollars to be utilized for existing two thirty one to improve that facility. So we included that in our tier one study, but it was to complement the midstates corridor, not in substitution of the midstates corridor. Which is supported in the in the study. Um, we also again will not be looking at a no build. Um, that was screened out in the tier one and we have a build decision. Um, however, it will serve as a baseline for comparing the alternatives. Um, here's our project timeline. So we've had a couple of meetings so far for the public. Um, very brief kickoff meeting, just letting everyone know that we had started tier two, given the project timeline. Then we met again when we had the draft purpose and need specific to S I U two tier two. And when I say S I U two, that's section of independent utility. Tier one identified five different sections of independent utility and what we're studying now is S I U two in this tier two. Um, so we we already have that public information meeting related to the draft groups and needs specific to section two. This fall will come back to the public, which will be the screening of alternatives report. And so we have also already presented some different. Alignments and facility types, so that will be screened down and we'll show you the alignments and alternatives that will be moving forward into a more detailed analysis. Um, and then in fall of twenty six, we will have the draft preferred alternative. And then in summer of twenty seven would be our final environmental document. So I'm going to hand it over to Jason, but before I do that, I do want to also say that. Along with NDOT overseeing this project, like I said, we had federal highway overseeing and approving this. Um, and along with federal highway, we had EPA, U S Fish and Wildlife, and the Army Corps of Engineers. So we had four federal agencies along with NDOT reviewing and approving the work that Lockmueller. Was doing and that continues into tier two. So Lockmueller um is doing the study on our behalf. Um, but you have five state and federal agencies that are reviewing and checking their work and making sure that it is backed up by data and that we are making data driven decisions as we progress this project.
Key note on those agencies, those are our cooperating agencies who actually will be signing off on the document along with the federal highway, who will be doing that. We also included a number of additional local agencies, like the city's been involved, as well as other state agencies throughout the process. Okay, so we started with the kickoff, the Kiana noted. Essentially, that was deploying our bill crews, starting environmental surveys. We had a public information meeting, as noted, to inform the public what was going on. There were a number of of property owner survey notices that we went out over six hundred that were distributed to property owners within the corridor, letting them know. What what was going to be going on, that we were going to be coming out for those surveys to provide the public information in regard to things starting up. Uh, obviously, our first step was collecting other data, going through the tier one information and beginning to develop preliminary alternatives at this phase within that identified corridor. So that was the initial activities. We also started building and updated models and provided more detail within DuBois County, specifically in the city, the county for travel demand and population unemployment. So the draft purpose and need was key element during that initial phase. Since this all flows down from the tier one document, what was identified in that tier one, we've retained those elements and that are the drivers for the purpose and need for the project. We also, as I noted, detailed out additional traffic model development. We also did additional coordination, particularly with other transportation facilities, the airport. Railways to deal with how we would be interacting with them. Obviously, a number of community meetings, including specific stakeholders. We interviewed a number of businesses. We developed a community advisory committee. To represent all aspects of the community and held additional public information meetings, obviously, at this point. Those resources that were gathered as we started the field surveys continue to be compiled and developed. So. There's a few, few of those key elements that we've been looking at. Water resources, key habitats, cultural resources, historic structures are a key, few key ones, as well as obviously looking at. The agricultural impacts, land uses, farm business and residential resources. So those key goals, as I noted, that flow down from that tier one, improving that regional connectivity from DuBois County and Southern Indiana, which is the twelve county study area that we defined. So that's a primary goal, and then improving the highway connections to multimodal facilities. That really is the driver and we are looking at freight movement being a key element that's really flows from this goal. And then with the tier one decision, bill decision, this has been added really, and it's really to, our process here is to complete section two. To identify the best right of way and facility to fulfill that tier one decision from essentially I sixty four, or I sixty four Dale to several forty six in Hazel. So that's an element that's been added. So. Multiple secondary goals that have been retained from tier one include improving traffic safety within the region, including traffic operations. And supporting economic development within that twelve county area. So those are not primary goals or core to the project, but they are additional anticipated benefits that will result from the project. So the other key element at this initial phase was the development of draft preliminary alternatives, and these were presented, and that's actually what I've got. Displayed here in greater detail for you, if anyone is interested in looking, but that included looking at, as I noted, additional multiple alignments. Trying to identify the potential to avoid resources within there, looking at specific geometrics and terrain elements. So these are still early concepts. We are continuing to refine them as we advance forward and look for screening, but. And seeking input from the public in regard to particulars of both those alignments and access considerations. So an alternative, as we wind up packaging them, include alignment for that main line, as well as an access option or options, obviously, where we would provide access points, how those access points would be connected. Uh, as well as the highway type or what type of facility, the super two or the expressway, as Kiana noted. But that's a part of that, an alternative as we're defining now, and how we'll be making decisions. So these are the maps. This is what was presented at the public meeting and what we have available at the project office. They include both those alignments as well as multiple access options. We have two discrete access options for each of those alignments is what represents where it's presented here. And any of the, both the facility types could be utilized with any of these tournaments. So one of the key focuses, as I noted, was access. So the lower inset there, and we do have a graph here, we essentially packaged up different potential access points, such as the crossroads that we intersect with. And and grouped them for input from the public and our stakeholder groups through that process. So you can see kind of how they're, how they're grouped through the corridor. And so where we're at now, the screening of alternatives, we're anticipating a public meeting here yet in the fall, anticipating that in October. We are. We're going to try and finalize the report right now to get published. We will be putting that out and obviously advertising for a public meeting that'll. Provide that information, both the data results, as well as where we're going moving forward or what we're targeting to be advancing for even further detailed study. So things will continue to be refined as we move through that process. So the, some of those key things that we've incorporated here, we talked about the, of being a traffic model, we are doing analysis on those alternatives to incorporate their performance and update that performance. We are evaluating alternative costs. That's been refined with the additional design refinements that's been gone on through this preliminary alternative development. And then we will have incorporating stakeholder input, which has actually adjusted some of those things that we got put out to the public initially. So we will also be gathering additional input as we present our recommendations to carry forward. So that'll be with the stakeholder groups, our community advisory group. Uh, as well as general public information meeting. We're also, through this process, evaluating those resource impacts that we've looked at, all the data that we gathered, we go with the cultural resources. Socioeconomic impacts and natural resource impacts would all be incorporated there. So a few pieces of information kind of moving forward here, just going back to the tier one, as far as some of the data. The tier, the tier one decision, I mean, looking at two thirty one, knowing that there is, you know, focus there with the information of the corridors. This corridor did provide the maximum relief to the existing facility compared to everything we looked at during tier one. Obviously, during tier two, we continue to look at that. And part of that is just kind of acknowledging how they're going to interact. We know that there's going to continue to be traffic. We're diverting. Around half of the traffic from two thirty one, depending on which section you're looking at in the tier one estimates, it ranged from around twenty percent to around seventy percent and maximum that would be diverted. Within Jasper, some of them are lower. Obviously, there's destinational traffic that's coming to Jasper to shop and in to the destinations along two thirty one there. They're going to continue to be going there, but what we'd be diverting then would be predominantly the through traffic, which is a key focus with freight movement. So as I noted here, next steps here will be the public information meeting this fall. That will reduce those number of alternatives, what I've got presented here. Uh, we'll narrow those down to a limited number that we would anticipate further refining in, in greater detail in a draft NEPA document. Um, that'll go into that. That next stage of that draft, which was anticipated next year. So that does include preliminary right of way that we're looking at now. Does have access options that are presented, and then obviously the facilities, obviously another GL. So. Uh, obviously still to come, kind of looking at what's, what's ahead of us in the project timeline. That next step in the fall of twenty six would be that draft NEPA document that would be putting a prefered alternative out based on what comes out of this screening phase and the additional input received. So and then as Kiana noted, we anticipate then a final sign off from federal highway after we go through some additional agency coordination. Uh, and obviously all the public input that we received on that recommended preferred alternative. To finalize things in mid twenty seven. So. And that'll allow the project to advance into construction. So that's really where we're at. One of the key elements and right now, working on funding for next phases is where NDOT's at, what we're looking at. And we are targeting as, after we've identified that prefer alternative and get through that, that outreach point, that we would be able to begin right of way activities. So that were anticipated in twenty six, after that prefer alternative is identified. Likely in focused areas, probably wouldn't be the entire twenty four miles at one time, but that's where we're headed. And that will then be an ongoing process as we continue to move forward. So. There's still other funding aspects that are being worked on. That's part of what's NDOT's doing right now, is we're going through this process to have that in place by the time we get to that final environmental document clearance. But that's where we're at and what we've got. There are any questions, we're glad to address them.
Like the only preliminary questions for the council members.
How many alternatives, nobody needs, unless you can narrow them down this fall.
We anticipate that we'll have predominantly alignments focused down to one or two alignments. Probably some areas only a single alignment, some areas there we look, additional variations that we'll look at. The access would be one of the, I think of the start of how those alternatives act. We don't have a specific number here. To some degree, we'll have a number of locations that'll have different access options. You could actually package those up in different ways. So to say exactly how many alternatives. You could kind of look at it differently, but it'll be a much smaller selection set. Three to four for a given location or for three to four, as you would package them up, but typically kind of two options in a given location. Where it would be, you know, at this alignment or that, some areas maybe, you know, down to the alignment, but we've got a couple of different access plans that would be looked at in a given area.
Jason, what do you anticipate to be the. The local funding timeline?
You're asking about what local funding timeline and when locals would be.
Where we would know how much to, we're going to build this road, how much input we have to have.
I can take that.
Yeah, that'd be an NDOT question though.
Um, so we're working that out now. We're trying to get a meeting scheduled with Lindsay Quest, who is our secretary or our commissioner of NDOT and that you Blower, our secretary. Um, to further those conversations about any local participation that may be needed. To help fund the project, but NDOT is already working on funding future phases for the project as well.
Is it, is still the plan in two thirty one would be assumed ownership of by Jasper and also then the county, assuming two thirty one and the county.
Yeah, so there's three entities within the area of relinquishment, right? There's Huntingburg, the city of Huntingburg, the city of Jasper and DuBois County. That would be NDOT's preference. We would not want to maintain two, two corridors that are parallel to each other. However, there are no agreements with those local entities to take those. Um, to take the existing facility over today. Um, but we are having those conversations. Um, but again, no agreements are in place for the locals to do that at this time.
Major concern, two thirty one is, I, nothing against them, God, please don't take this in all the way, but. In Jasper, two thirty one is probably the worst road in the entire city that we have. They patched it up so many times, you know, by the, I mean, up the breeder's sale. Uh, they do a twenty foot section, then they do the next one the next year, and it's, it's, it's been a total fiasco. And my concern is, if there's an expectation, we, we don't know what our revenue is even from our city perspective at this point. Because of property tax changes, because of a lot of different issues, really. Um, so that's still up in the air as well. But when I look at two thirty one, I, I think that that road almost needs to be completely rebuilt. To, to have it up to a level to where if we ever had to take care of it, I wouldn't want to take care of it in the shape that it's in right now. That's a major concern. For our, our citizens in here, and also to council as far as the cost.
Sure, and that's part of those conversations that are continuing to be ongoing. So NDOT looks at that corridor and we look at the next ten years. What we, what work we would be doing on that corridor in the next ten years. Um, and that goes into an evaluation for the corridor and there's a dollar amount assigned to that. And when I say the work that we would do on the corridor, that's not just our capital program, right? That includes, that includes construction projects. That's our maintenance facility here in Jasper. What are they having to do as far as snowplow, operational, operationally? Um, so we look at all of that, right? We forecast that out and there are multiple ways that we, we can do this. And those are the conversations that are continuing to be ongoing. NDOT can bring that road up into a condition that you're satisfied with. Um, there have been other relinquishment agreements with local entities where we, we bring it up. There have been other relinquishment agreements with local entities where we, we bring it up to a certain facility. We, there's just a lot of different ways we can do it. And also has given locals money to help take care of that. There are again, lots of different ways. I don't know what exactly will happen here. Especially since there's three different, different entities involved and there would need to be agreements with each entity separately. But we're hoping to continue those conversations and get it into a position that you feel comfortable with if you do make the agreement to take that road over.
Questions for, thank you for bringing some page. Going to the next section here agenda.
Chris, don't start that clock too soon. We're going to be squeezing for every second.
Say that I have Elmer Brahmas, Mike Ackerman, Paulson Much, Tyler Ger, Brian Teehaw, I've got Heiser registered to speak and then I also have a written statement from Mark Beston that will be read. I'll wait until we start, but you're ready for the thirty minutes.
Yes. We're going to get more time.
It hasn't started yet.
Okay, we're ready to go. All right, we're going to go quick here. We do have a number of speakers. So thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm Mark Trader. I think most of you know me. I'm here this evening in connection with my role as chairman of the Mid States Corridor RDA. As you just heard from Indon Lockmiller, the NEPA studies on improved north side road connectivity serving Du Bois County have been extensive. Over the course of the next sixty minutes, we're going to, you're going to hear two distinctly different views on the need for and the value of this proposed road. Now, since we are the proponents for the new road and we are going first, we won't have the same opportunity as the opposition to give a rebuttal. So we're going to, we're going to turn the page just a little and we're going to start by giving a few comments about what we believe you're likely to hear from the opposition. So we're going to do the rebuttal on the front. I do want to preface my comments by stating that we take no exception to those who are directly impacted by the Du Bois County portion of the preferred alternative route. We recognize these individuals are desperately trying to find a way to keep the road from being built as a means to keep their property from being impacted. And as they have shown, they understandably are willing to say and do just about anything in that effort. I will note that none of the properties located within the corridor are within the city limits of Jasper. We do, however, take great exception with the leadership of the two opposition groups, the Property Rights Alliance and the Stop the Mid States Corridor Coalition. Each of these groups are led by two primary spokesperson, none of whom have property directly in the preferred alternative within Du Bois County. The leaderships of these groups, who each have their own personal agendas, have presented pure fabrication as facts without providing any documentation or proof. So based on what we heard from the opposition leaders in the Huddersburg City Council meeting earlier in July, we're going to, we believe that there may be five statements that you may hear from them, all of which are unsubstantiated, unvalidated or untruthful. First of all, they will declare that everyone in favor of the road is guilty of collusion and corruption. In fact, the leader of the Martin County led property rights alliance closed his comments at Huntingburg's meeting by going so far as to state any elected official who supports the mid states corridor is currently publicly indicted and said he won't rest until they are criminally indicted. The leader of the Du Bois County led stop mid states corridor will put himself out there as a NEPA expert, which he is not. The NEPA reports, as you heard, they're massive documents stocked full of thousands upon thousands of data points and statistics, which is why the true experts use a holistic approach to reach their conclusions and recommendations. Just because you've read the twelve hundred page tier one study from cover to cover, looking to cherry pick a statistic or two that aligns with your predetermined collusion conclusion, that doesn't make you a NEPA expert. The opposition leadership will also tell you that if a bypass is built around Jasper and Huntingburg, the local towns will suffer economic decline, just like other towns had, and they'll hold up Kokomo as an example. This letter of support from Tyler Moore, the mayor of Kokomo, states the bypass around their downtown has driven opportunities for growth both along the bypass and the old corridor. Apparently the opposition leadership thinks they know more about Kokomo than Mayor Moore does. Or they will claim they have done research showing other communities have achieved smart, sustainable growth without the connectivity of an enhanced roadway infrastructure like the mid states quarter. Yet when you ask them to share the names of those communities, they can't or won't do so. And finally, they'll state the majority of your constituents are against the mid states quarter or citing a huge number of petition signatures and Facebook followers, none of which has been validated and reviewed by outside sources. And the only true test of this statement, in the last election, every candidate, both for local and state offices, who ran on a platform of opposing the mid states quarter lost by a significant live margin within our local voters in Du Bois County in the city of Jasper. Some of these losing candidates ran against some of you. Two members of the opposition leadership actually lost their own races for the Martin County Commissioner and the House of Representatives in District Six Three. So don't look for that. So for you as council members, I believe when you assess the validity of the various comments you hear tonight, you're going to need to ask yourself two questions. First, who are you going to believe? Will you believe the Federal Highway Administration, indot and Lock Mueller, the true NEPA experts? And those who support their legitimate conclusions and recommendations? Are you going to believe the opposition group, almost all of whom are non-Jasper residents, whose true objection to the corridor is a recommended route directly or indirectly impacts him? The second question for you is a fairly easy one. At the end of the day, whose interests are you going to represent? Are you going to represent the interest of your Jasper constituents? Or represent the interest of those opposed to the road, almost all of whom live outside the Jasper city limits? Obviously, as I said, that's an easy one. So the rest of the speakers are going to be a little bit more positive and upbeat than, than I've been, but you know, yeah, I want to take one real quick poll of those in the audience, and I realize we can't do that here, but those of you who are Jasper residents, would you, would you stand? Wait a second. Those of you who are Jasper residents that own land within the corridor or long or near within the corridor are supporting someone here because you're supporting someone in or near the corridor. Would you sit? If you own land or if you're here supporting someone that owns land in the corridor, if you'd sit down, say. So the vast majority of your constituents who are unimpacted, as evidenced by the small number that we had standing, they're not engaged in the discussions about the corridors. And they're looking to you, the elected officials for guidance. They're counting on you to tell them what you believe in the best course of action. You know, I know there's a lot to be cited yet on relinquishment. What we're looking for though is a philosophical decision. You know, so funfully intended, sitting in the middle of this road, not taking a position on on this important decision on whether or not this new road is in Jasper's best interests. It isn't going to help anyone. It's not going to help the opposition. It's not going to help the proponents. It's not going to help you as elected officials because both sides are going to keep hammering you for a decision. Most importantly, it isn't helping your constituents. At the end of the day, your constituents who elected you because they believed in you and a multitude of future generations of Jasper residents are counting on you to make the right decision for the future Jasper. All we are asking from you is that you say, if we can work out the details within that, we think this road is the right thing for Jasper. Thank you for your.
Thank you, Mayor Bundar High and County Council for this opportunity. I'm Sue Ellsperman. I am a mid states corridor board member. While I wasn't looking for the role, I said yes when asked and have tried to do that role with integrity these last six years. I was raised in Du Bois County, have resided here more than half my life. I retired two months ago almost from Ivy Tech as a president and plan to live here in Du Bois County. I was elected to represent Du Bois and Spencer County in twenty-ten as state representative. And I went on to serve as Indiana's fifty as lieutenant governor. As such, I served as Indiana Secretary of Agriculture overseeing Indiana State Department of Agriculture and five additional agencies that deal with economic development and quality of place. In twenty thirteen, Governor Pence appointed me to co-chair the Blue Ribbon Panel on Transportation Infrastructure for which we were tasked to do a thorough study of Indiana's long-term needs. We issued a report in twenty fourteen, which is publicly available and it includes a mid states corridor as a tier two project. These recommendations were a consensus of the panel's diverse mix of transportation experts, elected officials, transportation users and government support members, about forty in all. While some have noted that Hank Menke served on that panel, so did other prominent Southern Indiana leaders, including then Evansville Mayor Lloyd Winnicky and Perry County native Dennis Falkenberg, then president of Appian and one of Indiana's most renowned transportation experts. My experience with legislation, with bills, with problem solving in general, is that no bill, no resolution or solution is perfect. The question is, does the solution, what solution has the greatest benefit to the many and the smallest negative impact to the viewers? That is really what the tier two endeavors to do. Please be assured that our board is doing what we were asked to do. We are not driving the answer, but enabling indot and Lock Mueller group, their agent, to deeply study and propose a solution that will have the best net benefit. It will be then that you and all can decide if the squeeze is worth the juice. Finally, a word to those who say we should stop now. Stopping now means being satisfied with the status quo and likely a mediocre future for Jasper and Du Bois County. Why should companies further invest or choose to locate here? Why should top talent stay or move here? I have traveled to all ninety-two counties and many other states. There are dozens of counties that are attractive. And while one may not be able to replace all of our unique amenities here, ease of travel to and from and access to major cities and airports are a given. One only needs to watch the explosive growth around the doughnut counties of Indianapolis to see that. Du Bois County, on the other hand, currently ranks sixty-nine of ninety-two counties in growth over the last five years, zero. And that's measured by stats Indiana. In twenty twelve, as LG elected, I got to cut the ribbon with then Governor Mitch Daniels on the first part of I sixty-nine. It was fifty years in the making and finally Southwest Indiana had a road that demonstrated every day real benefits to Hoosier commuters, to businesses, to truck drivers, to students traveling back and forth to IU, to crane defense contractors, to airport travelers and so many more. The work underway today has the potential to positively impact the attractiveness, prosperity, quality of life and health and safety for our next generation. I humbly ask that you reaffirm the mid states corridor RDA and support us to complete the work you asked us to do six years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, the County Council of Doug Boppel, representing Jasper. We know this is controversial and very personal for many in this room and our community. As one of the older people in this room, I've witnessed the same thing on two previous roads. The first was in the early seventies, two thirty-one between Huntingburg and Jasper. It was personal for us because it cut our property in half. The next was I sixty-four. I was at the grand opening in nineteen seventy-seven. Even after it was open, people were complaining it was not being used. Look at it today. Both roads were placed by forward thinkers some forty-five plus years ago. I truly thank those women and men who had the vision to look to the future and plan for the future, even when there were naysayers. Just look at how these two roads have improved the safety in our community and have helped grow our community. Yes, I have listened to a wave goodbye to Jasper lights. Not true, quite the contrary, we will see growth and improve safety. If people just knew of the armaments that travel through Jasper many times every day, they would be terrified. Mid States Corridor is a road for the future that is needed today. Thank you very much.
Mayor Bundar High, council members, other city leaders, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Elmer Brahmas and I rise this evening in support of the resolution presented by the Regional Development Authority. I'm a lifelong resident of Du Bois County, a retired educator at Jasper High School, and more recently a retired commissioner of Du Bois County. I label myself as a progressive, not liberal, not conservative, but someone who wants to see Du Bois County move forward in a responsible way to improve our infrastructure so that the county can thrive for everyone, especially our children and grandchildren. As the county has grown over the last forty or fifty years, there have been multiple attempts, as you know, to improve the bottleneck we call two thirty-one, especially as it passes through Huntingburg and Jasper. Each time, and for a variety of reasons, those endeavors have failed or have resulted in a Band-Aid solution. That didn't stop the discussions or efforts, however. The need for an improved two thirty-one alternative did not go away. Eventually, the bypass, as it was called, evolved into a more regional solution called the Mid States Corridor. This corridor is important to Du Bois County, not only for the economic benefits it would bring, but also for what it says about who we are. I don't believe we want to isolate ourselves and our community, but rather we want to be welcoming to everyone, anyone who wants to visit or relocate here. And this corridor will help us be a part of the greater regional community. I also caution you, as Mark said, to be leery of the claim that the majority of residents oppose this project. I don't believe there is any data out there that would support this conclusion. I like to compare the importance of this project to that of the Toca Lake. And I know there are people here this evening who think that is a poor comparison, but I think it is a rather good comparison. I, because I recall the debates back in the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties. Yes, I'm probably older than Doug. They were just as contentious as this project, maybe more. The lake probably took five times as many acres as what this project will take, including whole towns. The lake not only successfully prevented flooding for farmers and towns downstream, but it also, it is also a recreational and tourism treasure. And maybe most importantly, the lake provides millions of gallons of water per day to residents of eight counties here in this part of the state. And I ask you, who would say that the Toca Lake was a mistake? Who would say that today? I implore you, please do not this, do not let this latest effort fail. I believe that fifty or seventy-five years from now, even though many of us will no longer be here, our children and grandchildren will look back and say, as painful as it was, it was worth it. And they will say thank you. And I thank you for your time this evening. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Ackerman. Thank you all for allowing me to speak here this evening in support of the Mid States Corridor project. Couple of comments that I'm going to make that some of which will tie into theirs and part of it is something new. So one of the questions that get thrown to me sometimes is, it's getting so far away from Jasper because we waited for twenty or thirty years till we've addressed the problem. Will anybody use it? The short answer is yes, especially through trucks. So we run a small fleet of trucks. One of our runs that we make regularly. One of our runs that we make regularly, we've got a choice of running a hundred and twenty miles through small towns with railroad crossings and stoplights, or we can take a longer route of about a hundred and fifty miles with very few small towns, very few stoplights, very few rail at-grade crossings. We take the longer route, saves time, it saves money, it saves fuel, it only makes sense. So to look at it and say that it's getting too far away to be useful, I don't think that's a real number to be able to look at anything on that. So that part of it I would like to put to bed. The other side that I want to echo the most is that this project isn't for our generation. This project is for our children and grandchildren. The, it's what a county can do, what a state can do, what our government can do, is look forward and put things in place to help us succeed. If we're going to look at it only from a standpoint of what do we need today and what do we have to do for ourselves, you can make a lot of other decisions. If you start looking at it in terms of, we need to address what we can do for the future and how can we make the best future for those coming after us, I think it's a pretty simple decision that we do need the road. Thank you for your time.
A packet's coming your way, just with some information and reference points that I'll address here. Today, you've heard absolute facts from NDOT and Lockmueller. A lot of times we hear, a big misconception is that they're biased facts, but when you have that level of oversight, the facts are the facts. And the fact is, businesses, opportunities, and investments are not guaranteed in our community. While we continue to have luck with local leadership, even throughout the changes, the fact is, things are happening, things are changing. In two thousand and fourteen, Mobile and Inwood closed after years of business here. Mobile reporting job declined from a hundred and fifty jobs to fifty-nine to closing. Inwood closing after years of business here with eighty jobs lost. In two thousand and two, Jasper Cabinet Company closed with a hundred and twenty-four jobs lost. Leeds Tools eliminated seventy-one jobs when they were acquired. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. I think all of you here and people in this room can recall some other other businesses being acquired, moving out of town, closing down. Just with the four examples I gave, four hundred and twenty-five potential Jasper residents lost their job. The reality is, is the last five years with most recent census data, wood product manufacturing saw a thirty-four percent decrease in jobs. Furniture and related product manufacturing had a two-point-eight percent decrease over that same five-year period. We can argue what those factors are for a multitude of reasons, but the fact is, is we've seen job decline in those past five years from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-two. It's no secret if you've been, if you've read the news, HNI, the parent company of Kimball, recently acquired Steelcase in Grand Rapids, who employs fourteen thousand employees. Recently, Master Brand merged with American Woodmark. And companies today are looking for every single operational efficiency that they can find, and they will capitalize on it. Despite this decline, manufacturing still makes up thirty-four percent of our employment in the county, followed by education services and healthcare social assistance at sixteen percent, and retail trade making up eleven percent. Those three are almost two-thirds of employment at sixty-one percent of our county. On the other end, agriculture, forestry, fishing, hunting, and mining is three percent of employment in DuBois County, tied for the third lowest, only above information at half a percent of our employment, and other services except public administration at two-point-two percent. Don't get me wrong, agriculture is vital and very important to our economy and to the U.S. and to all of us here, but we can't forget that this county has a strong manufacturing base, and we have to keep that base here. Today, we have local companies with local ownership making decisions on global and even national scales, national and even global scales. We have to ask ourselves, does our current infrastructure support the global operations of our companies to be able to survive? How can we help our companies survive in a global economy and national economy? How can we get them there? Because companies will find that efficiency and they will go to that efficiency. We can no longer think that the micropilot in the city of Jasper can survive in and by itself. We have diverse supply chains, and that logistics is so vital to companies today. And rural projects aren't new to Jasper or DuBois County. You heard US two thirty-one through Wits Bottoms was straightened out. And it's not a secret that one sixty-two bypass affects the city of Jasper. Saint Charles Street was expanded, South Newton Street is extended. The property acquisition piece of it is not a fun piece for anybody, but it's the path forward for our city. You've made historic investments in the city of Jasper in the recent years with downtown, the Ten Clark Cultural Center, the River Center, and more. Don't let your investments go to waste by dividing the city with the highway. Balance the traffic that should be in your cities going to your local businesses and the traffic that has no business, put them on the corridor. DuBois County has momentum and growth, and it's a rare advantage in today's age where a lot of communities are struggling for momentum and growth. Growth's not guaranteed. We have to act now to protect what we built or risk joining those in decline. Do we create a future where we can invest in amenities like a new pool, like the Parklands, like a regional wellness center? Or do we face a future where we can't afford those nice amenities, or we can't sustain those nice amenities? The decisions we make today determine whether DuBois County and the city of Jasper survives or thrives. You've all been elected to your positions to ensure the city of Jasper operates today at a high level of standards that we've set forth, and it remains the hub of activity for decades to come. You can't just think today, we have to think fifty, seventy-five, a hundred years out of how we support our businesses, how we support our citizens. Now, your constituents are looking to you to lead the way. You've heard the facts from Lockmueller. You've been presented with some facts here, and now you have to make a decision for the best, the best decision for the seventeen thousand residents of Jasper and the greater forty-three thousand residents of DuBois County.
Five minutes, okay. Bill Kaiser, here to read first a statement from, as Mark Mesper said, that statement's coming to you. Members of the City Council, I offer my support to the continuation of the Midstates Corridor project that should ultimately extend the four-lane US Highway two thirty-one from I sixty-four to I sixty-nine. This project will create a safer and more efficient route of travel from Jasper and Honeyburg to I sixty-nine and I sixty-four. DuBois County is a heavy manufacturing county, and its businesses that create jobs for thousands of our citizens need a safer and faster route to access the interstate highway system. The Naval Service Warfare Center of Crane and the industry at Westgate Tech Park will also benefit from a safer, more efficient north-south route as they continue to grow and add jobs to our reason, region. Getting the heavy truck traffic that is currently just passing through Jasper and Honeyburg on existing two thirty-one will greatly relieve traffic congestion in those communities and create safer travel as well. Mark Mesmer. I also would like to read a statement from Brian Nehof, who is the Chief Executive Officer of the Upland Science and Technology Foundation, which is located in Westgate, Crane. On behalf of the Upland Science and Technology Foundation, an organization dedicated to promoting and supporting the development of Westgate Crane Technology Park, I want to underscore how important reliable, safe transportation and connectivity is to the growth of southwestern Indiana's defense ecosystem. Westgate today includes about sixty-plus organizations across twenty-one buildings employing just over a thousand people with a payroll of ninety-two million dollars, up twenty percent in employment and thirty-seven percent in payroll since two thousand and twenty-two. With a hundred and fourteen million dollars already invested and multiple projects under construction, we are tracking three-point-two billion in active projects that could yield one thousand five hundred new high-tech jobs. Over the next decade, estimates indicate nearly three, three thousand seven hundred and fifty net new jobs and a payroll of approximately three-point-six billion and an impact of approximating fifteen billion, with the average salary is around a hundred thousand dollars. Any transportation improvements that enhance north-south connectivity between surrounding communities and our growing defense tech hub, improving safety, reliability, and commute times will directly support the broader region's defense sector, supplier base, and long-term competitiveness. Thank you for your consideration. Brian Nehof. In conclusion, the Tier One study had very good news for us. It showed that economic growth is to continue in DuBois County and in the city of Jasper. As you heard tonight, that's not true for all counties in DuBois, all counties in Indiana. But this future growth will require additional infrastructure to carry vehicle and truck traffic. It will cause further congestion without the Midstates Corridor. Workforce mobility is extremely important to our county. As many of you know, we bring in approximately seven thousand workers a day and have approximately two thousand workers leave our county. It's important that these people who want to come to DuBois County and the city of Jasper to work, as well as those people who choose to live here and work elsewhere, have mobility to move back and forth. You know, workforce is important to us. We cannot take for granted that we'll always have great employers who provide multiple opportunities for great jobs with great companies. As you heard, the world continues to change and our economy continues to change. Those employers who we've relied on in the past continue to be impacted by forces outside of their control. The growing concern about north-south traffic needs to be addressed. As citizens, we've already watched slowly as the traffic increases on Highway two thirty-one, specifically the heavy truck traffic. You know, we have daily traffic counts between eight thousand and ten thousand cars. That's interstate-level traffic. No bill, doing nothing, is not a choice. Are we the frog in the water that fails to jump out and save itself as the water continues to boil? You just heard from individuals who have committed their whole lives to this community in doing what is best for the community and who have been for multiple generations, just like many of you, some seven or eight generations. Like you, these people are leaders and visionaries in what they've done for their families, their businesses, their communities, both locally and statewide. They are here this evening in support of the corridor because it's what's best for the future of the city of Jasper and DuBois County. It is the responsibility of this city council, the plan for the future of this community, its current citizens, and its future citizens. Thank you.
I was, I have one, I guess it's understand I heard, so also can say that we had zero growth last five years. Of course, we have different sources, different, different metrics, population growth. We've served and been saying some, a lot of housing in the DuBois County area. That doesn't account for those that have been abolished out of service and people. Think that's a, to be honest, it's a
Stats Indiana.
That's, that's Indiana.
No, Stats Indiana is the source, is the source.
Thank you. Any others? If not, we're going to the next discussion.
Thank you all. For the opposition group, I have Maggie Mary Stone, Jason Fleck, Anna Jones, Jason McCoy, and Wayne Turner.
It's gonna sanction you, tell me, you know, we're
I have.
How do we do it?
Uh, better, better. Here is the, the actually here, so make sure you get
Get into it.
Okay, come up that one.
Thanks for calling. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council members, mayor, members of the community, and fellow presenters. We really appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of you all. My name is Maggie Mary Stone, and later you will hear from Jason Fleck and Anna Jones. We're here representing the Property Rights Alliance, but also more generally to articulate many of the concerns that we've heard about the Midstates Corridor project. Our community faces a decision that will shape Jasper for generations. We owe it to ourselves to think through the effects this project could have. Our group has studied the state's and the city's official project documents, public records, and the experiences of other communities who have gone through this before. We can learn from their experiences and decide for ourselves what we should do. We believe the facts show this road will take more from Jasper than it will ever give back. By the end of this presentation, we believe that you will see that the cost is too high, the benefits too small, and the risks too great for our community to bear. We're counting on you, our elected officials, to represent all of your constituents in this matter with integrity and transparency. It is, of course, easy to hear the loudest, most connected voices. We're here to amplify voices and perspectives you might not have heard that had the opportunity to hear yet. Many stakeholders, everyday citizens like farmers, that's the Clint Farm right there on the screen, small business owners, and new residents like me, and longtime families, like a lot of people in this room, haven't had the opportunity to weigh in. They are the people most affected. We hope we leave you with a better understanding of how people feel about this project. In the early days, few people had a clear understanding of what the project even was, vague notions of a road somewhere. Now, as the project progresses, people are becoming better informed, and more and more people are turning against it, and the trend appears to be accelerating. I haven't been involved with this group as long as some, but the more I learn about the proposal, the less I think it's a good deal for the people of Jasper. Okay, everyone here, by a show of hands, how many of you have actually read the thousands of pages of the Tier One Environmental Impact Study and the Tier Two Purpose and Need? No, not too many. That's understandable, but they're important. We've already invested three and a half million dollars on these plans so far. They're the core documents guiding this project. We feel they're crucial to understand because impacts could be so great and irreversible. Just because we've spent a lot of money so far doesn't mean we should continue to do so. These families have cared for their land for over a century, some for two. Their farms have weathered wars and droughts, yet they stayed in the same families for generations. If this project moves forward, some of these legacies could end or be erased. And they are only the most visible victims. Behind them are countless neighbors, families, workers, and taxpayers whose lives and pocketbooks will also be changed in ways that we cannot take back. One hundred and forty-nine homes and businesses, maybe more, stand to be taken by the state, and taxpayers will be on the hook for that. We're not even sure how much land acquisition will cost over and above the one billion-dollar official estimate, but we're certain it's going to cause a lot of tears. The most common thing we hear when we talk to people about the road is, I'm not losing my home, so it's not going to impact me. But it will, and we're here to explain how. You've just seen the personal side of this project, the homes, the farms, the families that would be forever changed. But these stories are part of a larger pattern. When we look at the Midstates Corridor as a whole, four hard truths come into focus. These are the reasons this project fails Jasper, and we're going to walk through each one, what it is, why it matters, and what it means for our city's future. When we look at how this project has been handled so far, it's hard to have faith in the process. The more we've learned, the more we feel, the more it feels like the outcomes are predetermined, and the public's role is little more than an afterthought. The Midstates Corridor has been driven by insiders, leaving the public largely sidelined. Well, all of the people here and online who are opposed to the Midstates Corridor, please raise your hands for the council. Okay, now keep your hands raised if you're not within the two-thousand-foot corridor study area. That's a lot of hands. Thank you for showing up tonight. This is the most equitable hearing we've gotten so far, and we are all thankful to the city for that. From the beginning, the Regional Development Authority has talked about safety and congestion, important issues, yes, but problems that could be alleviated for far less money by improving existing roads. Meanwhile, local landowners have faced lawsuits simply for protecting their property, and the strongest voices for the project come from people with the most to gain financially. Jasper residents deserve a process rooted in transparency, public input, and solutions that put our community first. We've talked a bit about the people we represent. Let's talk about who represents the Midstates Corridor. The RDA was not born from broad public demand. It began with a small group of business leaders and legislators after earlier It began with a small group of business leaders and legislators after earlier highway plans failed. Formed in two thousand and eighteen, it blends taxpayer dollars with private donations, giving the greatest influence to those with the most resources while diminishing the voices of residents and sometimes even local officials. We don't even know who the contributors to the RDA are. The project should be able to stand on its own merits and not depend solely on the support of powerful people. Why build this road in the first place? What does the study say? And what do the roads proponents say? In early meetings before the draft environmental report was released, people in Jasper and Odin were told the project goals were to improve safety and relieve congestion. That's what people heard and what they wanted. But in the official documentation, connectivity is the primary goal. Improving safety and congestion had to be only secondary goals from the start because federal reviewers said those concerns were not severe enough to warrant such a massive and expensive project. So the paperwork didn't change, but the public message continued to be about safety and congestion, even though connectivity is supposed to be the primary goal. The only conclusion about that we can come to is that talking about safety and traffic relief makes for better sound bites. You can see it in the Tier Two Purpose in Need pages thirty-seven and thirty-eight. One much more affordable solution to the safety and traffic issues was announced by Governor Holcomb in two thousand and twenty-two. He allocated seventy-five million dollars to approve, to improve US 231, including passing lanes, turn lanes, and safer intersections, the very fixes people asked for to the problems they cared about. These proposed changes to 231 would no doubt make it safer. What happened to that plan? The state's own draft shows traffic south of Huntingburg is already acceptable. Between Fourteenth Street in Huntingburg and State Road 162 in Jasper, congestion becomes unacceptable only in the afternoon peak and only in one direction. The fix for this is already in the pipeline. Passing lanes are scheduled for construction in two thousand and twenty-nine. Those lanes would raise traffic ratings to ideal in the morning and acceptable in the afternoon. But if the corridor is built and US 231 is turned over to local governments, those passing lanes won't be added. We would lose a funded, cost-effective, targeted solution, and forty-four thousand DuBois County residents would still be left with the problem. The cost of the Midstates Corridor can be measured in dollars, but also in other terms. The pre-COVID estimate for the Midstates Corridor was about one billion dollars. With inflation, rising construction costs, and typical cost overruns, the real number will likely be far higher, potentially approaching or even exceeding three billion dollars. But let's be conservative. Even using the one billion dollar figure, that's over eighteen million dollars per mile for fifty-four miles. Per perspective, the Parklands cost taxpayers three point four million dollars. One mile of this road equals more than five Parklands projects, which thousands of people enjoy each year. Do we spend billions to divide farms and neighborhoods or invest in what clearly benefits the community? What else would this project cost us? Hundreds of thousands of dollars in tax revenue because of land removed from the property, property rules. Eighteen hundred acres of farmland, seven hundred prime, at least one hundred and forty-nine homes and businesses taken by the state. I heard someone say it this way: "You can move a factory, you can't move farm." We stand to lose almost a thousand acres of forest and five hundred acres of floodplains. The costs are high, no matter who you are. So we've mentioned that safety and congestion problems could be addressed at a fraction of the cost of the corridor. So that just leaves connectivity as the goal. It's connectivity anyway. It's a broad term, and it's impossible to refute. If you build a new road, it must connect things, even if those things are already connected by, say, US 231. DuBois County, including Jasper and Huntingburg, already have strong highway connections. I-64 is right on our doorstep. I-69 is just twenty miles to the west, and another I-69 connection is available near Crane. Building a new highway that mostly parallels 231 isn't going to improve connectivity. It's duplicating what we already have. We don't need to spend billions of dollars for a second version of 231. It makes you wonder what the real goals are. We know that a couple big businesses and landowners support the road. So do the people who would be involved in building the road or providing the supplies. They must all believe that the road will have a positive effect on their bottom lines, and I'm sure they're right. But at what cost to the rest of us? There are other ways to improve traffic flow, getting some trucks off main city roads and saving them fuel and transport times. In two thousand and twenty-two, the Indiana Forest Alliance, the Hoosier Environmental Council, the Sierra Club, and the Coalition Against the Midstates Corridor studied existing roads and identified ways to improve access and create truck routes around Jasper and Huntingburg. These options could have reduced traffic and shipping costs without building a new highway. But just like the proposals to improve 231, all of our suggestions were dismissed. Once again, the corridor project did not grow out of the needs of the community. They reworked the purpose to batch a road they'd already decided to build. Now I'll turn it over to Jason Fleck.
Good evening, city council. Thank you for the chance to speak to you here tonight. First, if the process for the establishment of this is questionable, the claims made for it are also questionable. You know, there's three scenarios, three outcomes to this, right? The one that these mainly businesses, because I didn't see any citizens speaking up for it, but rather the business interests, is that this road is going to turn Jasper into utopia, and it's going to be wonderful. Well, there's two other outcomes that are potential, right? The other one being mainly a neutral effect. The status quo is maintained. We spend billions of dollars on this road, but there is no real economic development. We just get to Indiana a little bit faster, a whole six minutes. The worst case scenario, and the one that we worry about, is where the bypass will actually cause economic harm to the city of Jasper, right? There's plenty of examples of that having happened previously. We're going to demonstrate those to you because the, there are no guarantees. So let's start with some studies, some independent studies. University of Kentucky, University of Texas, they've all studied these bypasses along the Ball State. And one of the things that they show is bypasses often harm local communities, increasing downtown business vacancies, reducing retail activity, and lowering per capita sales. Real growth comes from investing in your community, right? Quality of life improvements, housing, school, healthcare, parks, amenities that attract people who run businesses and work in this slide. We've heard some claim, you know, folks that are supporting the project, that sound awful good, things about unemployment, housing, and this and that. So let's dig into that a little bit. Unemployment. There's a lot of complex variables that play into unemployment, right? Business cycles, local investment, workforce training, short-term hiring projects, a lot of complex variables. To think that one road is just going to magically improve unemployment, that's a false assertion. What I can tell you is that DuBois County unemployment is two point eight percent as of May two thousand and twenty-five, according to the Indiana University School of Business. Billion dollars for a two point eight percent increase, it's not a great return on investment. That's not a lot of bang for the buck, considering maxing it out is only two point seven. Housing, you look at I-69. Some benefits have happened in Bloomington and Evansville, but very little in between. Let's look at income, rising income. Well, again, a lot of variables, right? Different types of mixes of businesses, their education of the person, the cost of living, a lot of variables. You cannot guarantee that building a road is going to increase the income of people. And then as far as new businesses, just yesterday, Mr. Peppinger briefed Huntingburg that two businesses were expanding and four more were coming into the area. There is no Midstate Corridor yet. So obviously, that's an important fact. It shows that this area is desirable, and people want to come to it. Slide. Let's dig into some independent research from these universities that we talked about. University of Kentucky case studies, the bypass that bypasses increased downtown vacancy and lead to losses in retail oriented business. The Kentucky Transport Study reports that highway density is negatively correlated with rural job growth. Strong Towns author Charles Marone warns that local, local governments often build so much low productivity transportation infrastructure that governments are now choking on the maintenance cost. Now it hits home, close to home, doesn't it? University of Texas analysis found bypass cities suffer per capita sales declines across multiple sectors. The message is consistent. Proms boom rarely arise, but the costs certainly will. A study commissioned by DuBois Strong indicates that most of the new jobs tied to this project would be service sector jobs at inter, interchangements, not high-paying jobs, career-building jobs. The reality is low-wage, high-turnover positions don't build lasting prosperity. A lot more details about that are available in the packet folks either have or will receive. Slide. So let's set that aside for a second. Let's set aside projections, economic modeling, data analysis. Let's just use common sense in our own eyes, by saying. What you see on the screen here is a Dollar General. That's on 231 in Spencer County. In two thousand and eleven, 231 was widened to four lanes. Fourteen years later, this is the only business, the only new business along that stretch of road. Is this the kind of economic development we can expect from this corridor? Again, there are no guarantees, despite the proclamations. Look with your own eyes. You folks have been up and down that road. What do you see? Slide. Another real-world example. On the screen here is Interstate 69 in Washington, Indiana. The economic development was sold there as well. All you're going to find at that intersection is a Hux gas station. Now look. Jobs don't necessarily come just because you build a road, right? That's just not, not a guarantee. So let's, let's hit another data point. Nineteen seventy census and the two thousand and twenty census, fifty years, roughly my lifespan. During that time, the population of Jasper has grown at one point seven percent for fifty consecutive years. That is great growth, manageable and consistent. Fifty-year track record is awful hard to beat. Job growth since nineteen eighty has increased by sixty-eight percent. Again, all that without any corridor being built. I'll do you one better. Going to Evansville on sixty-fourth. You're going down to Costco, Walmart, all that shopping areas, right? And take I-69 down. So that's the intersection of sixty-four and sixty-nine. It's the biggest intersection in southern Indiana. Can you all recall what you're going to find there? Truck drive to school. There's not even a gas station there. That's the biggest intersection in southern Indiana. Bar nut. Next slide. Let's talk about hidden costs, right? We're already facing the potential maintenance of 231, and that is considerable cost. There are some other things that are going to be built into that, right? And what I'm getting at is, you know, we're going to lose farms and homes. That also reduces the tax base. You can't charge property tax if houses are gone. Farms are businesses. You're going to lose that revenue as well. And let's talk about the streets. You're going to have dead-end streets, rerouted roads, delays in emergency responses. We'll demonstrate that here in a sec. School bus routes be different. And in some cases, you're going to have to cross that Midstate Corridor, sixty mile-an-hour corridor. That's going to happen as well. On top of that, you're going to have fragmented forests, paved over wetlands, polluted waterways, environmental losses that aren't going to come back. These are not hypothetical risks. These are real costs that citizens of Jasper are going to pay. To think that the maintenance cost of 231 is the only maintenance and infrastructure development that Jasper is going to be on the hook for would be in for that, that would be an incorrect way to look at that. This is a limited access road, which means you can only get to it at certain points, thereby creating traffic at those points. Right now, traffic just kind of disperses and goes where it is. Now it's going to be focused in these four points, or however many there are, right? Which means that that corridor is running north and south. Jasper is going to be responsible for the east-west connections. Do you have enough lanes to accommodate funneling everybody into these tight areas? Do you have lights? To think that this road is going to get built and everything's going to be fine is not the case. You got the hook once with 231 maintenance. I guarantee you it will not be the last, less than five minutes. Slide. Slide. Sorry. Take a look at that. Every, every road on there that's listed in red means all five alternatives close off that road. Those roads are gone. This road will literally divide DuBois County in half. It's a physical barrier. Slide. Slide. One more. Here we go. Look at the picture on the left. A is emergency services, B is a residence, right? Point nine nine miles. Now, after the corridor, that road doesn't connect anymore. That same emergency services to that same residence, now three point two nine miles. And then you got to go reroute around back for emergency service to get to a potential hospital. That's going to add time and money. And if the fire department has to do that, you can count on your insurance company raising your policy. Longer the response time of the fire, uh, the fire department to arrive at your residence, the more your insurance is going to be. Look. We're going to add another highway, another cost that's going to be sunk in is the lease to patrol that road. Fuel, vehicles, potentially officers, and the opportunity costs. Y'all are business folks, right? What are we, as citizens, giving up to fund this? Are we giving up the wellness center? That'd be a tremendous amenity at this place. It's opportunity cost. You pay for this, but you give up that. What are the residents sacrificing by contributing to this? And with that, I'll hand it over to the council.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Jones. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. We've heard a lot of great information, and if we're going to invest big, let's invest in things that keep people here and attract new families and businesses, not in a bypass that diverts opportunity around us. These are the projects that people ask for: the Parklands, the Riverwalk, the Train Depot, our schools, the Cultural Center and the library. They make Jasper stronger and more connected in ways a bypass never will. And remember, one mile of the proposed highway equals more than five Parklands. That's real return on investment. Great healthcare, more housing, a vibrant downtown, childcare access, and a new wellness center. These are what keep people here and draw new families in. The renovated square alone has already brought new business and energy to our community. These are the investments with lasting returns, unlike a costly highway that takes resources away from the improvements that people actually want. Of all of these, housing that's affordable is on top of young adults' priority lists, myself included. Many of us don't believe we can ever afford a home or the same quality of life that our parents and grandparents have had the opportunity to enjoy. To address that takes deliberate action, and this proposed project threatens to take the air out of the room for any discussion about expanding access to our, for our most talented young people. The brain drain is real, and this is a leading cause. So far, we haven't really talked about the opportunity cost for business. The city of Jasper's own two thousand and nineteen comprehensive plan identified six potential sites that would be good for further industrial development. According to the plan, quote, "The first and most feasible location is on the south side of Jasper along US 231, where existing manufacturers and adequate infrastructure is currently located." Unfortunately, that's exactly the section that will be bypassed by the new corridor. Ironically, this section aligned perfectly with Governor Holcomb's two thousand and twenty-two allocation of seventy-five million dollars in lane and intersection improvements. We have sites that are practically shovel-ready, and that would have benefited greatly by using the money that was already allocated for this purpose. On the other hand, let's look at the areas identified near the three corridor access points. Area two would be located behind Walmart. It's beautiful back there if you haven't ventured back, and would require utility development. Areas four and five also need infrastructure development. Area six isn't even within city limits, and the city would have to extend infrastructure to develop this region, probably at a significant cost. The real choice is simple. We can upgrade US 231 for a fraction of the cost, about one fortieth of the proposed corridor. and avoid saddling taxpayers with decades of extra maintenance and infrastructure bills. Or we can build an incredibly expensive new highway, spend even more to extend utilities and roads into less suitable areas, and then keep paying paying to maintain it all. The seventy-five million dollars for upgrades to two thirty-one was already allocated. Spending billions instead isn't just wasteful, it's more stewardship of the public's money. Why spend billions to bypass Jasper when we could fix two thirty-one for pennies on the dollar? The bottom line, Jasper planned for growth in the best location we have, and the state committed the funding to make it happen. The midstates corridor flips that plan on its head, pulling development away from where it belongs. Why trade a funded, ready-to-go solution for three billion dollars in a bypass that sends opportunity past us instead of into our city? Before we close, I want to address a call to action recently published by supporters of this project. They urge residents to call their council with four key talking points. Let's look at those in light of what we've already discussed. First, economic growth. Efficient transportation is essential to attracting business. That's true, and we already have it. Besides, the state's own commission studies show most potential new jobs would be in low-wage sectors, gas stations, hotels, and chain retail, not the high-paying jobs our community needs. We've seen this before in Spencer and Davies counties, where promised growth never came. Second, existing employer growth. They claim the road will broaden the employment pool, but the travel time from Jasper to Indy would be reduced by just six minutes, hardly a game changer for recruiting talent. Meanwhile, displaced families will compete for already scarce housing, and some skilled workers may leave entirely. Third, community connectivity. We already have strong connections to I sixty-four and I sixty-nine. The proposed corridor largely duplicates US two thirty-one and sever the very connections that keep our community together, between neighborhoods, schools, farms, churches, and emergency services. Fourth, sustainable development. They say the project can be planned to limit environmental impact, but we've already seen the state shift goals, reject proven alternatives, and understate costs. If they're not transparent about the purpose, cost, and timeline, why should we trust them to deliver on environmental promises? If there are cost overruns, which of these priorities do you think will take a backseat? This is a tier-two study timeline on NDOT's website. Incourt NDOT testified that survey access delays were pushing the project behind. Yet, the public timeline doesn't reflect that. We have heard they may now try to move the schedule up by a year. Why? If the story keeps changing, how can the public trust what's shown here? We want to leave you with one final thought. The truth is simple. For every test that matters, cost, benefit, and trust, this road fails. Council members, we want to thank you for your time and your consideration. These thirty minutes flew by, in my opinion. You have a standing invitation from our group to meet anytime, anywhere, to talk about this project more. Please review these materials that we've provided and reach out with any questions. We all want what's best for Jasper, and your decision, whatever it is, will shape our community for generations to come. Thank you very much.
One minute remaining. I know there's two speakers left. I'm sure that you can meet with any of the council members at any time.
Dean, are we passing? The other people signed up, right? Jason, I see you passing. I'm sure you're passing, speaking, sir.
I'd be glad to speak.
Yeah, we have about a minute.
Wayne Porter of Jasper. Uh, I just want to say, this is such an important decision to be made. I see no reason why it shouldn't be put on the the ballot. Hear everybody, everybody in DuBois County. Anybody agree? I would certainly hope so. Uh, you know, um, I reviewed the regional development uh, meetings, and I got to give it to Mark. I don't know how he does it. I've been present in a different community organizations, but from the minutes that I read for two years, there was never not one opposition to any motion. Everything just went right on through, sailed right on through. I don't understand that. Hopefully, I can speak to you and find out and learn something. And Mr. Mayor, I talked to you, called, had set up a date to meet with you. He was good enough to call me back. And in that conversation, it was like an hour before we supposed to meet, and you told me, you know, I told you what I thought about this. And anyway, you told me, this is like three months ago, and then um, I took, you know, you told me, your answer was, we don't have anything to do with that. I took you at your word, but it seems ironic. Three months later, then we have this meeting here tonight?
Mr. Porter.
Yes.
I'm sorry, but the thirty minutes has expired.
Okay, I'll just finish my thought. I just didn't understand that, and I'm open to any.
Whatever it was, it probably had to do with the decision. We were relying on the input of tier-two study. That's what we, as a council, as a city, that's what we're doing.
We can navigate in seven minutes.
So council members, do you have any questions?
Yep, thank you. I just, I couldn't understand that in three months time period, when you told me before you know, we don't have anything to do with it. And it's like all the other politicians. Anybody I've talked to, nobody wants to talk. They want to run. I'm not with any organization. I don't pretend to be, and I'm not. But I think we need some answers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No question politician either. Any questions from the council members?
Real opportunity. A lot of great information from all sides this evening. Well, several we reached out, myself, all the other council members as well. Several months and weeks, and we appreciate getting all the input and taking all that into consideration. So it's not an easy task, whatever way, whatever way it falls out, I'm prepared to give. Meeting the night gave me a little letter or a lot more information to digest uh, you know, there coming across from both sides. So.
It was our intent. Our intent was to have this available so that we could get an update on that. An update from both sides, with the opponents and the opposition. So down the road, we're not making any decisions tonight. It's an informational session, so that's what it's for. I appreciate it. I didn't get it played here, but I appreciate the fact that's what you can.
Thanks for all.
And lastly, speaking for the council, we have received a tremendous amount of emails and text messages and stuff like that. That's great. We apologize if we didn't have the chance to read all. If I didn't answer that, I tried to answer a lot of that. I assure you, if it came to me, I I went after them to read it, and they were some greater expressions. So thank you very much, and keep up.
That is, I'd say, Phil, that's true. Those that's up there. I think we read the letters. We had so many come in. That just keeping up with that is trying, trying, as you try to protect your business as well. So we appreciate those inputs. It helps us in our perspective. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion. Nancy, all in favor, simply saying aye.
Aye.
In votes. Being adjourned. Thank you.